This meeting of August, where is the date here? Twenty-eighth. By standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have the roll call, please.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
George Pond.
Present.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Present.
Larry Matthews.
Present.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers Davis and Wooden have excused themselves for this evening, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the council minutes of July twenty-four, or August fourteen, or study session notes of August seven? If there are none, they are approved as presented. We don't have any proclamations or ceremonies tonight, so we're going to move right to citizens' right to speak, and I see we're, look like we're going to have some. These are items that are not on the agenda. We're going to start with Dorothy Archer, followed by Carol Tolman.
My name is Dorothy Archer. Address is thirty-six forty Marshall Street. Wheat Ridge. Good evening, council and citizens. I'm approaching council again because I'm concerned and hopeful that the issue I presented to you some weeks ago on July twenty-fourth, you are considering getting that on a study session date. The issue that I presented was the grave concern by many citizens that I have spoken to you over these last two months of our concern of the thirty-five-foot flat roof possibilities that still exist in all residential zones except R1C and R2. We'd like to see this council address this issue soon and not leave it for the new council to address. I appreciate all that you do, and I know that your schedule is tight, but let's move along with this very grave concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Carol Tolman, followed by Joe Demat.
Hi, my name is Coral Tolman. I am thirteen years old, and I'm a 4-H member. This is my fifth year on 4-H. Some of my projects that I do in Jefferson County 4-H is shooting sports. I shoot muzzleloader twenty-two shotgun archery and western heritage. I also do livestock. I raise sheep, chickens, rabbits, and turkeys. I do public speaking and sewing. Today, I came to thank you guys for your support in 4-H and to thank Mr. Urban for purchasing my grand champion market turkey at the Jefferson Livestock Fair Auction that just happened. I came to deliver it tonight, and I just wanted to thank everybody for their support in 4-H, and we really appreciate what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coral, what's her name? And Mr. Demat?
Hi, my name is Joe Demat, fifty-three eighty-seven Newcombe Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado. I am here tonight to thank the city, all of you, for your support of the Carnation Festival we had two weeks ago. It gets better and better every year, and we get better and better support every year from you all, from the city staff, especially the Parks Department, the incredibly hardworking people. You cannot imagine at one-thirty in the morning, three or four people from the Parks Department running around that park in the dark cleaning up. It's absolutely amazing, and I cannot thank them enough. The Public Works Department for closing off the streets, keeping everybody safe on Forty-Fourth Avenue, keeping Thirty-Eighth Avenue. They had a crazy weekend that weekend, the parade, the bike race, and flawless. They did it flawlessly. It was amazing. Can't thank those people enough. Especially thankful for the incredible support we got from the Police Department this year. Didn't skip a beat, never had a problem, never didn't have them looking out for us all weekend long. You know, what we see from Friday to Sunday during the festival is one thing, but to see them there at six in the morning, one in the morning, three in the morning, all night long, there for us, there for our vendors, there for our volunteers, it was fantastic. I want to thank all of our sponsors once again, the vendors, the volunteers. Could not pull off a Carnation Festival without all of the support we got. On a personal note, I want to thank my board members. Some are here. Ruth is here. Ruth Baranowski, Leah Dozeman, running the, chairing the parade this year, Walt Pettit, his son Dave Pettit, Mike Papuntanakis from the Rotary Club, Ron Benson, Gail Schreig from the Optimists, Juanita Gutierrez from the Wheat Ridge Art League. We have several of our park staff on the board with us, people from the Police Department. Thank you. Thank you all for helping, and thank you for putting up with us already, because we've already scheduled our next meeting for next year. So especially thank you for that. I'd like to switch gears for just a minute also and talk about the Wheat Ridge Business District. The Wheat Ridge Business District's Revitalization Incentive Program, we call it. We do matching grants for eligible projects to the facade, paint, signs, architectural design, landscaping, and accessibility of commercial properties. This year, we are announcing our new Facade Plus program for commercial businesses willing to invest in their properties to make dramatic changes in the curb appeal. We are matching up to thirty-five thousand dollars with our new grant program. We are having an open house. This will be the first of this year on September seventh, from four to six p.m. at Infinitus Pie, fifty-eight oh seven West Thirty-Eighth Avenue, that's about Fenton Street, September seventh, four to six. Come in, meet some of our board members. Some of them are on the, on the dice today. Some of us are in the, in the crowd today. But we'll be talking, you'll be able to meet some of our board members. We'll be running down our new Facade Plus program. We'll be talking about our other program if you're just looking for smaller projects. Just come by, see what we, see what we do, talk to us, see if we can help you, if you can help us, learn more about it. And following up about the Carnation Festival, the festival's not over. The festivals in Wheat Ridge are not over. September ninth, Ridge Fest on Thirty-Eighth Avenue at Stevenson Elementary, more festivities, more food, more music, more fun. So we got another good couple of weeks coming up here. I just wanted to come up here, say happy Monday, and thank you all. All righty.
Joey, if I can ask you, the Wheat Ridge Board meeting, the open house, that's a great idea, by the way. Nine seven, what was the location on that?
Infinitus Pie.
Was that Infinitus?
Eight oh seven. I'll check my note before I tell you the wrong address, sorry. Fifty-eight oh seven West Thirty-Eighth Avenue.
Okay.
About Fenton Street, I think that is. Yeah.
That's a great idea.
So September seventh should be a good time. All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
That's all I have for citizens wishing to speak. Any changes in tonight's agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I would like to move item three to item two, and item two to item three.
You'd like to switch places of those two items?
Correct.
Did you want to say why?
Well, if we pass item two, then item three will become a moot point, so I would like if we're going to...
Oh, I see what you're doing.
Item two is to adopt a revised city purchasing policy that would put the signature line at a hundred thousand. Item three is a motion to approve a payment at seventy-six thousand. So if resolution number two, as it currently stands, passes, there'd be no point in moving to number three to begin with.
I understand. Okay, then let's move on to item number one. Which I have to back up here a little bit. Ms. Hoppy, I believe, is Councilwoman Hoppy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Bill Number seventeen dash twenty-seventeen, an ordinance amending section five dash forty-one of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning building permit fees. At issue, an amendment to section five dash forty-one of the Building Code is recommended in order to provide clarification on the definition of project valuation. As a result of a protest filed in two thousand seventeen with the city treasurer, staff reviewed the administrative practices used in determining project valuation. Staff and the city treasurer proposed amending the current code language to provide greater clarity for the business community. In addition, after considering the data, staff and the city attorney and the treasurer reached a consensus that the cost of construction valuation is consistent with common practice among other cities in Colorado and is a business-friendly approach. It was also determined that a code amendment that defines valuation and total value would provide clarity concerning the city's valuation method and hopefully avoid future inconsistencies. Staff and the treasurer recommend amending section five dash forty-one of the code to include a definition of the term's valuation and total cost as a matter of clarity, and that the cost of construction as set forth in the ICC be used at the time of construction project permit is issued.
Thank you. I do need an ordinance number on that since we're on second reading.
This will be ordinance number sixteen twenty-eight.
Sixteen twenty-eight. Opening the public meeting. Does staff have a report?
Madam Mayor, Jerry, were you going to say something?
No.
Okay. We don't have any formal presentation for you this evening, but we're here to answer any questions that council might have.
Okay. And I don't have any...
No one has signed up.
Okay. Are there any questions of council members who, excuse me, staff? Is council members have any questions with staff?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Urban?
As we discussed in the study session, I wanted to just reiterate the question that I had relative to the issuance of billing permits regarding rer roofing and the like, and that this particular ordinance wouldn't have an effect on causing any increase or change to those particular types of fees. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
If there's nothing else, then I can close the public hearing, and let's go on to a motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number seventeen dash twenty-seventeen, an ordinance amending section five dash forty-one of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning building permit fees on second reading, and that takes effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second? Segmented by Mr. Ann. No discussion. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Now, we're going to move on to the former item, number three, and it's now number two. Mr. Ann, I believe that was yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion to approve payment to Insight Public Sector in the amount of seventy-six thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-two cents for the annual renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. Issue: This is a scheduled and budgeted replacement of obsolete, sorry, of obsolete Microsoft software licenses at all sites and the support and maintenance that is inherent with upgrades or new software. The annual renewal of licensing and support will cost seventy-six thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-two cents, which was approved in the two thousand seventeen IT budget.
Thank you. Does staff have any presentation?
We do not have any presentation this evening.
Are there any questions of staff at this time? Mr. Matthews?
I'm curious. Seventy-six grand for updates seems like an awful lot of money. If we were buying everything scratch, you know, I wouldn't shake my head at it quite so much, but just for bug fixes and maybe a few supposed value-added items, it seems like a lot of money to keep this thing going. How do we know we're getting a bang for our buck?
Thank you for that question. I think most importantly, recognize that this isn't for updates necessarily. This is our regular licensing through Insight, so these are the licenses, and you can see through the itemization in the document attached that the quantities vary, and so this includes desktops, surface tablets, or server equipment. So it's the whole spectrum. It's not just like, say, a routine software upgrade to one piece of equipment. It's an enterprise-wide licensing agreement that we have with Microsoft. Does that help clarify that?
And it's also part of the state of Colorado, NASBO, right? Do you want to speak to that, what that is?
So the state of Colorado is a partner with NASBO, which you might remember as WSCA, WSCA is what they used to go by. NASBO is a national purchasing cooperative group that negotiates contracts for cities and states across the country, and this happens to be one of the agreements that they've negotiated.
Other questions? Mr. Urban?
Thank you. With respect to the vendor Insight sector, Insight Public Sector, what is the, what was the procurement process that we went through to select them as a vendor?
So this is a five-year agreement with them, and we did go through a formal procurement four years ago now. Insight was selected from a number of vendors that proposed for that. I believe they're also the state-awarded vendor for this, but I would have to double-check that. I don't know off the top of my head.
And as it relates to the, so this being the fifth year, then in two thousand eighteen, this will go out to some procurement process for bid, or what is the process to go out to bid on that?
It could. It might, we might also revert to the NASBO agreement to see what state their negotiations are in, so we would look at both.
Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Brown numbers, how many city employees do we have?
We have two hundred and thirty-one point eight seven five FTE, to be exact.
Is that round numbers?
That's an exact number out of the budget book, but in all seriousness, and then we have a few hundred part-time employees, so...
Okay. I was just curious, because we're buying three hundred and fifty sets of Microsoft Office, and I didn't think we had that big an office staff, so I was, I mean, does this, where all do the other hundred copies of that go to?
You would want to think about mobile equipment that we have. As I mentioned, we have surface tablets, we have desktops, we have server units, we have training laptops that we use in our police department training room, we have staff at each of the different facilities. So I'm sorry, I can't give you an exact number-for-number count off the top of my head, but these are the appropriate quantities.
Thank you.
One more question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As it relates to the payment terms, it indicates that credit card is the payment type. Is that accurate? And if so, what kind of rebate or other benefit are we getting by paying via credit card?
I wouldn't expect that this probably would be paid by credit card, but that would be determined by the Accounts Payable Department division.
But this is not a normal price point at which we would use the P-card system or a credit system, or is it...
Only the Accounts Payable Department has a card that would handle that level of a purchase.
Okay.
The IT Department, when they make a purchase, they're capped at a much, much lower level.
Sure. Okay. And I guess my final thought on this is that these are the types of purchases that the city council will not see should the next item be approved, so this may be the last time that we're considering the approval of a payment of this amount, and I, for one, would like us to be able to continue to do so, but just to make that point that if the next item is approved, that this may be the last one that we're approving.
Anyone else? Nope. Okay. I don't, we don't have any public testimony. I'd need a motion then.
I move to approve payment to Insight Public Sector in the amount of seventy-six thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-two cents for the annual renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement.
Second?
Segmented by Mr. Fitzgerald.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I have a voice, some male voices over here. There's no further discussion. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, let's move on to item, it used to be three, now two, and this is Councilmember Davis is, not Davis, Pond, Councilmember Pond is reading this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution Number thirty dash two thousand seventeen, a resolution adopting a revised city purchasing policy and rescinding all prior resolutions in conflict therewith. I'm going to stop short of trying to get to that issue and allow staff to summarize this.
You want to go on? You're on.
Okay. So the summary is the request for approval of the recommendation to increase purchasing cards, single transaction limits, combine goods and services into one category, and set a new purchasing acquisition limit in that category, signature approvals, raising those, keeping the department designee at five thousand, bringing the department director up to twenty-five thousand between five thousand and twenty-five thousand, allowing the city manager approval from twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand, and city council's approval of all of our transactions, payments, and awards at a hundred thousand. Oops, sorry. There is a lot of detail here, I realize that. So acquisition limits, combining goods and services, requiring informal written quotes between five thousand and twenty-five thousand dollars, and formal bids and proposals over twenty-five thousand. For professional services, that would be a new category for architects, engineers, landscape architects, surveyors, and land surveyors, with discretionary purchases among our on-call consultants for tasks up to twenty-five thousand. That would, those on-call consultants are selected on a qualification-based award. Informal quotes and RFPs among the on-call consultants for tasks between twenty-five thousand up to fifty thousand, that's raising that by twenty-five thousand dollars, and then having a new formal qualification solicitation for consultant selection over fifty thousand. And then also, specific to CIP and construction, allowing informal quotes over twenty-five thousand up to a hundred thousand, and formal solicitations beginning at a hundred thousand.
Thank you. My sense is the council has quite a few questions about this endeavor. Are you, are we open to questions at this point? Of staff?
Okay. I'm going to start out with the bullet points, which were the, if, I'll read this, "The proposed policy change will streamline the city's purchasing and contracting processes in the following way. The item will increase the revenue share in the purchasing card program." If an item comes to us and is then approved, are you still not going to buy it with a P-card, and how does that, how does this motion improve that revenue, increase it?
So that, that item is specific to raising the single purchasing limit from three thousand to five thousand. It doesn't speak to the other aspects of the proposal.
And how many, how many, how many city employees have P-cards?
Probably.
That would fall into this category in this three thousand, five thousand spending range?
It could be as many as a hundred and seventy-five.
Oops. Thank you. How does it eliminate redundancy in the approval process? Are we redundant?
So I, so I believe that that wasn't intended to be a slight to you by any means. Please don't take it that way.
And I was being a little facetious. I apologize. I know you're new and new to council, and you haven't met me before. That's my sense of humor coming through.
Well, I take my job very seriously, and...
As do I, ma'am, but I also try to...
I certainly understand.
...see the bright side of everything if I can.
I get it.
We have enough distressing news that we deal with all the time. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So redundancy is maybe not the best choice of word, but these items are presented in the budget, the line item budget that you see, and so what that was alluding to is the fact that we're having those conversations at the beginning of the year, and we internally are working through those procurement processes very diligently. It's probably a twenty-five-step process from beginning to end, and it's speaking to time rather, maybe equally importantly, not to mean that council's approval is not important. That wasn't my approach.
I'm sure it wasn't. There's no personal jab there, trust me.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to get through this. How does it increase accountability at management and staff levels?
From, you can do that.
The increase in accountability at management and staff levels really speaks to the realignment of accountability, so certain items that we would, that we currently bring to council, we're shifting that responsibility to staff, and so with that new responsibility comes greater accountability, that we're following our established processes and protocol.
Who's the new watch, who's the watchdog?
Well, I would say the Administrative Services Director myself, Jen Nellis, our purchasing agent, Patrick Goff, our city manager. We have our city treasurer, Jerry DeTulio, who signs off on stamps, accounts payables, pretty much on a biweekly basis, and then our mayor has responsibility to sign off on all contracts. None of that process is changing.
Well, but that would, she wouldn't be responsible for signing off now on this new difference, would she?
She, the mayor, as established by charter, is required to sign off on contracts, so she or whoever resides in that position would still sign off on contracts.
So they would all be under contracts and not just purchase orders?
It, it depends on the item that you're speaking about. So in the general sense, if we have a contract with a company such as Insight for the Microsoft licenses, the mayor would be signing off on that agreement.
Can I read it, too?
Okay. But if the, now I'm, now I'm in a quandary, because if we've given the authority to sign, to do the purchase to staff members, how can the mayor refuse to sign the contract? And I guess that's a Mr. Dahl question.
Well, what you're seeing is really the intersection between, pardon me, the charter requirement that the mayor sign all instruments on behalf of the city, which are typically contracts, on the one hand, and the administrative kind of contract amount approval and, and payment process. I will tell you that I'm certain that the, the mayor's authority in the charter wasn't written with, with the sort of implementive consequences in mind, and you have to sort of read them both together as you must, and the way I typically advise is that the purchasing limits and the processing of purchasing matters is handled administratively. purchasing matters is handled administratively. But where there is a contract, the mayor also has to sign. So, it is true that if the mayor feels that the contract for some reason should not be signed, then the mayor can withhold signature, despite the fact that it was within an, you know, the appropriate amount for, for expenditure. If that happens, it's a rare case, but if that happens, it'd be the mayor probably raising the question to me or the manager, saying, "The money might be appropriately signed off on here, but, but I'm not in favor of this contract." The, the money being already in your budget. So, it's typically not a, "Should we spend the money or not?" question, because this council made that decision when it approved the budget.
Thank you. I yield the floor for now. I'd wish more questions, but I'll let everyone else kind of get in and warm the pot.
Senator Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. Thank you for the name correction. Heather, you, going back to the accountability here, the oversight, this doesn't necessarily have to be a contract. It could be just a purchase order, right? So, you don't review every purchase order, do you?
Purchasing does review every purchase order. So, a, a purchase order is what's created, excuse me, when a staff member submits a purchase requisition, which is a form that we have that requires certain information, such as the account number, the amount, the required signatures based on our current signatory levels. Oftentimes, a contract is part of submitting a purchase record, purchase requisition, which then becomes a purchase order. And the purchase order simply means that the amount of funds is encumbered. And so, payments go against that purchase order.
But going back to the question of oversight, do, do you review each contract as a?
I don't currently review each contract or purchase order. We have an established process whereby the staff member submits the purchase requisition. It goes to the director if it's at a certain limit, and then it goes to Patrick. I sign off on all those that are within my department, my oversight area. Jen and Cindy in purchasing review all of those requisitions that come through requesting to have a purchase order established. If a purchase order isn't required and it's a payment, that goes through a separate process that has multiple checks and balances. Does that help?
Yeah, I'm still questioning the, the whole oversight thing, though. I'm still wondering, I think your answer, as I understood it, was the department head would, would, is, provides oversight. Is that what you're saying?
They do, yes. Currently, they do. And as I mentioned, any item that comes forward that requires our city manager's signature based on current signatory level is reviewed by Patrick. You know, if there's missing information, we kick it, we kick the purchase requisition back to departments and ask for follow-up information if it's incomplete. If purchasing has questions, it's kicked back. There's multiple checks and balances in our current process that would stay with the requested increase in approval limits for that, for that reason alone.
And as an example, Mr. Fitzgerald, anything today, any purchase order today over 15,000, it comes to my desk for signature, if, if there's contract attached to it or not.
Other council questions? Mr. Matthews?
Well, I'll, I'll have some further discussion after the motion's read.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How many times have city staff used the P-card for purchases at or near that 3 to 5K limit or in the past year? I mean, how many times has that limit been a hurdle for business operations?
I would say that, I can't give you an exact number. What happens then is if the P-card can't be used, they'll let somebody know that we have an interest in buying something, but then we need an invoice to pay from. So, then we have an order form and a, and a, an invoice that then gets stamped up to 5,000 or put through for a purchase order. If the vendor requests a purchase order, we can do that for any amount. So, I don't really have a number to give you for that.
And then, as it relates to the use of the P-card, is there any upper limit relative to a 12-month period of time under which that, so, let's say a P-card is used at that 5,000 limit, and it's paid off and used again. At, at what time do we know if a particular vendor is receiving payments from a P-card at or above that $100,000 limit? Do we know how to track that or otherwise keep track of that?
Yeah, we do audit the P-card process. A, so, from a purchasing perspective, always purchasing from one vendor is one concern you have. I understand that. Reaching the limit typically is defined by for the same item, right? So, if you have one person going back to the same store and buying the same item or type of item all the time, then that's gonna kick in. We do have reports through the Commerce Bank Control Pay system that we can run, also through the ADG accounting system. We can run reports on vendors, and we do look at, you know, where the money is being spent. I, I will say it's a little harder through the Control Pay reporting. The auditing that we do every month is a little bit more manual at that level, so that is a little harder.
Okay. And as it relates to multiple departments using the same vendor, there's no way to ascertain whether or not that, that particular vendor is receiving funds from the city of Wheat Ridge at or above any certain level? It's sort of up to the departments to report that? Or, because one of my concerns is relative to a, a, a particular vendor receiving P-card payments at $4,999 from staff in several different departments. And then, by the end of the month, they've already received $100,000 in payments from the city. And there is no approval from city council. There's no sort of oversight or other sort of guarantees. It's sort of like a hole in the ship. And I'm trying to figure out, how do we track those types of instances, if those instances even occur?
We have the ability through ADG, which is our accounting system, to pull reports by vendor. So, I can pull up a report and see all the payments that we've made to a particular vendor. It would be very uncommon for, and Patrick, you can interject, to have one vendor receiving multiple payments from different departments. I think on a most practical level, you would see something to the effect of going to Sam's Club, where we have an account with Sam's Club. Is that correct? Do I have that right? So, purchasing food for a meeting activity, something to that effect, would probably be the most common use. But otherwise, you know, we have the ability to pull reports on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. And I have not seen that happen in the time I've been here. So, it's something that I think there's enough eyes. The purchasing card reports that are submitted to supervisors on a monthly basis, just to emphasize this check in control, supervisors are required to look at each expenditure listed to make sure that the appropriate account number is being logged by the employee, that there's adequate justification. And then the supervisor signs off on that. All of these reports go to accounting. Accounting also reviews all of the reports. Our city treasurer reviews reports. And, and really that culminates in our annual audit process, when our auditors spot check our purchasing card reports. And if they find anything that they view as deficient, then they let us know that. And we take whatever action we need to correct that.
Okay, thank you. And this may or may not be a question for the city attorney, but which resolutions are we repealing with this particular resolution, given that it asks us to rescind all prior resolutions in conflict therewith?
I don't, I don't know what those are. The clear intention is to say, "This is the only resolution on purchasing limits that will exist." I, I don't have the background in what, what old ones are in existence, but this one will wipe them out.
Is this true of every ordinance that we pass of this nature or similar natures?
To some extent. I mean, in fairness, ordinances will say, you know, repealing ordinances or portions of ordinances in conflict therewith. This is really saying, "Any resolution on purchasing is gone." And the only one we're gonna have is the one that's in front of you. So, it's a kind of a broader repeal. But I think probably the thing to bear in mind is that so long as this ordinance fully covers the waterfront, fully covers the topic of purchasing limits and authorizations, then I think you can be comfortable, and you have to hear that from staff, that it covers all the bases. If it covers all the bases, then you really do want any other ordinance or other resolutions repealed.
Which I think is appropriate, but understanding specifically which those are and how those impact other elements, as much as this may be the total waterfront of all purchasing, there may be a resolution relative to purchasing that has some other component to it that then is rescinded by this that is, there isn't sort of a single subject requirement for our resolutions. Is that correct?
No, concern, no, not at all. So, you've got all prior resolutions concerning the city purchasing policy. So, you could certainly say all resolution, all resolutions and parts thereof concerning the city purchasing policy are rescinded with respect to the city purchasing policy. And that would preserve, in a resolution out there 10 years ago, it's on purchasing, and then there's a random section on something other than purchasing, and that would preserve that. You could, we could wordsmith that paragraph five to accomplish that.
That would be more preferable in my mind. But as it relates to staff, are you aware of any specific resolution which we're repealing or?
If this helps, Councilmember Urban, the format of this resolution is exactly the format from the 2011 resolution that was brought forward and passed by council. So, we follow the same format in terms of outlining and itemizing each specific increase that we're requesting, starting with the purchasing card and then moving down. So, I'm not aware of any other section. This follows the 2011 format. And I believe 2011 followed the prior format. I don't remember what year that was done in. It was perhaps done in 2009 or earlier than that. But this does follow the 2011 format.
Could we just simply ask this to replace the 2011 resolution as a single item versus going through and saying, "This is rescinding all resolutions that are not even, even demonstrated here"? That?
Safe.
Yeah, I think that's safe and appropriate. So, maybe the paragraph number five would be, "The most recent prior resolution concerning the city purchasing policy is hereby rescinded."
I would prefer a resolution number in there, but that would just be?
No, and I don't have one.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not.
Oh, do you have it?
From 2011. I can get it for you quickly if you just give me, and then I can look it up.
Mr. Urban, is your goal to break the three amendments separately? Is that what your goal is?
No, my, my goal is to keep us from having a broad generalization of rescinding all prior resolutions in conflict therewith and reframing that to say, rescinding a particular resolution from 2011 regarding this particular topic, so that we're somewhat specific. That way, we're not sort of blowing everything out of the water and not knowing even what we're blowing out of the water. We need to be, I think, a lot more specific in that regard, because if the 2011 resolution did replace the 2009 or whatever the previous resolution is, then that should be sufficient. But to list the 2011 resolution as a, as a standalone rescension, but that would be my other question. Is it, is it appropriate for a resolution to both be discussing the city purchasing policy and also discussing the rescinding of another resolution?
Yes, because you don't have a single subject requirement for resolutions. You only have it for ordinances. And frankly, the topic is, is fairly all-inclusive. Once armed with the number, do we have one?
I am. That was Resolution 46, 2011.
Okay, so you could change a paragraph five to say, "Resolution 46, 2011 is hereby rescinded." Period. That's all you need to do with that paragraph.
That's in the reading of the option, of the motion? Well, let's see.
Yes, it'd be an amendment to the resolution.
So, you've got a pending motion to approve, do you?
No.
No, we don't have, we don't.
Okay.
So, the motion could be changed from the get-go?
Yes, an amendment can be made.
Right.
Well, the amendment can be made in the motion, or we can, we can move separately to amend the resolution, which probably, which makes more sense to me, by the way, just to, so, Mr. Urban can do that when he wants.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I, I had a couple of questions. I was gonna hold over for motion discussion, but this one, while the staff is involved. At the end of the study session, when we were talking about this, I asked you to be prepared to justify why some of these numbers were going up by factor 400%, 500%. My comment was, "I could understand adjusting for inflation," but a prior council thought that these limits were justified and sufficient. And what is the justification now for this huge jump in having things take place, and I say this somewhat facetiously, behind the iron curtain at staff instead of coming forward to council?
Yeah, it's, I think we, we did explain that at the study session too, but it's, it's not really tied to inflation. It's more tied to best practices and providing a process that is consistent in our market with other cities. We looked at, and it's in your packet, or it was in your study session packet, what other cities do, what requirements they have for their different vendors. And it's, it's more aligned with what the best practice is today for purchasing. And that's what we're aligning it to, not, not an inflationary number.
Mr. Pond?
So, procedurally, I wanna ask a couple of questions for, for clarity. This, this, we're, we're spending some time talking specifically on the approval limits. Those limits are active, I believe, really for items that have already been approved within, within the budget. Is that correct?
That's correct. Anything that comes, that needs to be expended that was not approved in the budget, even if it's a dollar, has to come to city council. City charter requires that a resolution is, is adopted to amend the budget and to use reserves.
Right. So, we can talk about this as a magnitude in terms of what comes to us or what doesn't come to us, but we're not talking about magnitudes of spending beyond budget, because that's not the issue. This is not spending outside of a budget.
Correct.
Are we ready for a motion? Mr. Pond?
I'd prefer to have the amendment first. Amendment to the resolution?
Well, we don't have a motion.
Where you make a motion to approve the resolution, and then somebody move to amend. Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna change the motion. I move to approve Resolution number 30 dash 2017, a resolution adopting a revised city purchasing policy and rescinding the prior resolution 46 dash 2011.
Second, seconded by Councilmember Hoppy. Discussion. Let's start with Mr. Man.
Okay, I wanna thank you all for your patience with me, if you will. I, I have concerns here, and it's more on a global, a global platform than just individual apartment heads might be stealing from us or something like that. In about a month, we're gonna be getting a book about this thick. It's gonna be the next budget. And especially for new council people coming in, and I've been here now, I'm going on my second year, trying to dive into that budget and do due diligence for the citizens to make sure that we're protecting their best interests is very difficult. And I like not having a lot of things happen behind the iron curtain, because it's just like the Microsoft agreement today. That brings it forward to us every month on a regular basis, and it helps all council members stay in touch with the money that's being spent and where it's being spent and, and how. And that's why I, and I've noticed there's just been this retreat from getting items forward to council. And I, I don't like that trend. But to me, just to see the Microsoft contract come up and to be But to me, just to see the Microsoft contract come up and to be able to comment on it and satisfy myself that, yeah, it's a good thing and satisfy the citizens, more importantly, that are listening to us, that it's a righteous purchase. I really have a hard time giving up that right to oversee what we're spending on a monthly basis. Thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Yeah, I, you know what, I, I think it's a good point and I, and I get the reason to move the agenda around a little bit tonight to do that. I, I'll tell you though, I have a contrary view to, to that, which is that what we learned today in that discussion, and I think it's good that we have a discussion, so I'm not arguing that point, but what we learned today is that this was part of a procurement exercise that occurred, um, several years ago. Um, I believe that was brought to council and we, and we, and we looked at how that was let out. We also heard that this is part of a purcha, you know, a part of a collective, um, kind of, um, purchasing effort where we can get good prices and negotiate prices. And, and, and so in, in many ways, there is redundancy to come back for the last four years and this was in the budget, was discussed in the budget book, it went through a reasonable and competitive procurement and RFP process. And this is this year's installment of it and it's exactly to the penny, you know, where it was previously. You know, talking about how many seats we have, computers or laptops or something like that, I do think that's a budget item absolutely, and I think we should talk about it. I don't know that we should talk about it here, so to me, this becomes about time. In many ways, the, the documentation to put the seventy-six thousand dollars and change together, that took a considerable amount of time. The contract is, is, is in, is baked in the cake and it was four years ago. The purchasing price is baked in the cake and it was last year and when we agreed on the budget, so that hasn't really changed. If we don't have the time to talk about those things to the satisfaction of some of the council members and, um, up here or to the citizens, then we either need to make that time upfront in the budget or I, perhaps we do have to make it here. I haven't seen that, but to me, that's the balance is, is creating some efficiency and not, um, you know, pushing essentially for some paperwork to come through because I've been, I've seen a lot of this happen, um, and we have, we have kind of blessed it multiple times and I don't know that that's as more, as important as making sure that there's some public input to it. So if we're not doing the right amount of daylighting to these items during the budget process, then I'm willing to, to talk about how these exercises become those, but otherwise, we are kind of stamping it again after already stamping it a couple of times and I do think that's a, that's a legitimate concern. But I, I'm, uh, very sensitive to, to listening to people's concerns about, about the level, but I do see, I'm not hearing a lot of other consternation perhaps with the rest of it. I support it, um, um, as it is, I'm willing to talk about the approval levels certainly, but I look at it from an efficiency standpoint and the fact that we've actually already seen it and approved it. If we're not seeing something and we're not, we don't have the time to talk about something that we should, then I, I agree with the point of, of making time for that.
Mr. Urban, I'm going to call Ms. Ren since she has a second.
Thank you. I have more questions now than I did at study session. I mean, I understand us wanting to be efficient, I understand it's a time concern, but also I think part of our job, my job on council, is to make sure that I am doing my best to oversee, uh, where our money is going. So for me, at this point, to say I feel totally hundred percent in support of this and this is really going to be efficient and effective, when I have so many questions, I just can't in good conscience do this or, or vote yes on this. I understand what, what's trying to be done, but I also see that we need to be accountable. I want to see whether it's Microsoft or any other item that's coming here that might seem like it's redundant, I want to be able to see that, look at it, I want our citizens to know what we're doing and where it's going. You know, the devil is in the details, so I'm going to be voting no on this and that's why, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think one of the benefits of seeing the, uh, resolution relative to the payment to Microsoft, uh, to the tune of, uh, north of seventy thousand dollars tonight, is to help both our citizens and ourselves understand, uh, the true expense in running a city and by allowing these upper end purchases to come before city council, it provides both a, a true example of the true costs to run a city, but also it gives us as a council the opportunity to give one more, uh, review over these large purchases that are going to, uh, private contractors. And as much as we, uh, respect and need the oversight provided by staff, our role as council is to provide that last level of, uh, both liability and oversight in these types of, um, uh, contracts. So when I see, uh, a resolution asking us to, uh, pay for certain amounts, it's both important for us to, uh, be that checks and balances, but it's also important to show that, uh, we can't run the city on, uh, a shoestring budget, that it does take, uh, quite a bit of effort, time and dollars to run our city because of, uh, like we saw today with the Microsoft licensing requirements and those kinds of issues that come before council, uh, I think give both the citizens and us that understanding that, uh, there are true costs to running our city and this is one way to show those true costs. So, um, I would like to see an amendment. I guess my, my first question is, um, relative to number five, given, this is a question to the city attorney, given the, the motion that Councilmember Pond made, uh, referencing the specific resolution, uh, number five still states, "All prior resolutions concerning the city purchase policy are hereby rescinded." Uh, so do we need to amend item number five in the resolution or does his motion cover that?
I, I heard his motion as, uh, amending, uh, paragraph number five to simply repeal that resolution in two thousand and eleven. That's, that's how I heard his motion, heard his motion sort of wrapping approval with this resolution as amended into one motion.
I just want to make sure that-
Yeah, and that's how we'll print it up, uh, when, as and if council approves this, I'll make sure it's written that way.
Okay, so then-
Good question.
That, uh, particular amendment doesn't necessarily need to be made, so, uh, the next amendment that I will make is to item, uh, three C, uh, for the city manager approval levels. I'd like to have that, uh, read, uh, city manager over twenty-five thousand up to thirty-five thousand and, uh, item three D, city council over thirty-five thousand. Yes.
Can you re-
Second.
Did you repeat that?
So, in the, uh, first now therefore be resolved, item three C and item three D, uh, three C being city manager where it currently states over twenty-five thousand up to one hundred thousand, I would have that read, uh, three C over twenty-five thousand up to thirty-five thousand and three D, city council over thirty-five thousand.
Second.
First page of the resolution.
It's on the actual resolution?
Yeah.
Not the council action form?
I think that it's important that we try to get rid of some of the extra time that we have the staff working on, um, bringing paperwork to us, you know, much like, um, Mr. Pond said, that it's important that we're able to free them up to also spend time on other larger projects. And, um, I, I am okay with talking about the amounts of how high the, the amounts are, but, um, taking it back to the original thirty-five thousand is, to me, um, is, is not appropriate. I would be all right with taking the city manager, it used to be fifteen thousand up to thirty-five thousand, I'd, I'm all right with it going twenty-five thousand up to seventy-five and city council seeing anything over seventy-five, um, but I will be voting no on this amendment.
I ditto that.
Oh, maybe I didn't clear it. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, the motion ties three to three with councilmembers Pond, Hoppy and Fitzgerald voting no. Mayor?
Mayor breaks all ties except on adoption or amendment of the budget. This is neither adoption nor amendment of the budget, so you have to vote.
I'm pleased to vote and I'll be voting no.
Um, the mayor votes no and the motion fails four to three, three, three to four, excuse me.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
I guess I would ask, uh, a question and maybe, uh, Councilmember Hoppy will, will put forward the amendment as she stated it, um, but I think, but, but I guess the, my question would be, and perhaps for Councilmember Urban, um, putting forward the initial amendment, is that to say that the remainder of the language in, in what's proposed in here is, is acceptable and that really it's the sub-paragraph three that we're, that we're trying to deal with? Yeah, I asked him a question.
Right. I was, I was thinking of trying to explain what you were asking him, uh, which was, we're talking about the dollar amounts.
I was just asking for the floor, that was all.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, there, there are several issues that I have with this, but, um, it would be more palatable for me if our, uh, signature level was at or below cities like the city of Nevada, the city of Fort Collins, Jefferson County, uh, so on and so forth. So it, it seems as though, um, at our current line item, signature line item at thirty-five thousand, if we have these other, uh, um, elements in here regarding procurement, that it would work better, but, um, but I would still, uh, be reticent to vote for this by, uh, even going to what Councilmember Hoppy suggested at a seventy-five thousand dollar level, because that still puts us, uh, higher than Nevada, uh, as it relates to a signature authority and, uh, higher than the Westminster Fire District and, um, on par with places like Laramie County. So, um, but to me, uh, as much as we might think the city of Wheat Ridge is, uh, the same as some of those other jurisdictions, we, we do not have the same budget as those, uh, entities and, uh, the reason that we have a thirty-five thousand dollar cap isn't some, in some ways it is arbitrary, but in other ways it, it does sort of reflect the overall nature of our budget being smaller than other municipalities. So when I see the city of Nevada, uh, signature authority level of fifty thousand and the city of Wheat Ridge has a thirty-five thousand dollar level, um, that to me is somewhat disconcerting. So, um, I would be comfortable voting for this if it had a, uh, council approval level at, uh, thirty-five thousand.
Other discussion? Actually, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Hoppy.
Keeping in mind that all of these items are items that have come through our budget, which we spend an immense amount of time on, and if we have, uh, questions on them, the staff is always available for us to ask those questions before, um, we approve the budget, um, I would like to amend this motion in, um, a way to hopefully have a win-win here where it says, item number two, C, city manager over twenty-five thousand up to seventy-five thousand and change D, city council over seventy-five thousand.
Second to that amendment? Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have a second for that amendment?
Clarification.
Clarification, go ahead.
You may be, you're, you may be reading-
She meant, she said two, but she meant three, I think.
Yeah, she's reading a different, a different section, I think, from the report.
Oh, sorry.
So probably paragraph, paragraph three, the same paragraphs that, that Councilmember Urban was referring to.
Three C and three D.
At this time, we have, the amendment, the amendment is to, on three C as well as three D, both of those last figures being changed to seventy-five thousand. Does that clear for everyone? And we have a second on it and we have discussion, please. No discussion, please go ahead and cast your votes.
This is on the amendment?
Oh, wait, let me make sure I cleared it, I think I did, but.
Oh, do we need to re-vote? We're casting our votes on the amendment, please do.
Um, the motion carries five to one with Councilmember Matthews voting no.
Then the motion carries. Oh, that's right, we had to go back to the main motion, oh, that was the amount amendment.
Yeah, you need to vote on the main motion now.
We'll now vote on the main motion as amended twice, well, not twice, because originally we were good.
Um, the motion carries four to two with Councilmembers Matthews and Urban voting no.
Okay, we are really, um, done with the business meeting. We will be moving on to, um, the special city council session, but let's go on to the city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mayor. Next week is, uh, Labor Day, so happy Labor Day, we won't have a meeting on Monday. But we do have several other meetings coming up, I want to remind council and the public of, uh, September sixth, uh, our Wheat Ridge Police Department is going to have the Wheat Ridge Crime Forum at the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center from six to seven-thirty P.M. Um, that will be, uh, your opportunity to, um, get an update from our police chief and other, um, police officers, um, about, uh, current crime trends in Wheat Ridge and then also to ask any questions you may have. September eleventh, our, the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee is, is planned, um, scheduled to come to, um, a special study session of city council to give their initial report out. Um, and again, this is just an initial report on, uh, what they've heard so far and what their plans are moving forward, so don't expect any major recommendations at this, at this time. Also, some exciting news, we have a couple, um, groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings coming up, um, you'll get your, um, official invites here soon, but October eighteenth, the Corners at Wheat Ridge, our thirty-eighth and, and Wadsworth Project is going to be having a, a groundbreaking, October eighteenth. And then, um, Fruitdale, um, our Fruitdale School, um, is going to have a ribbon cutting, um, on October nineteenth, the next day, so you should see, uh, some, uh, official invites soon. I think that's all I have, thanks, Mayor.
City attorneys?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerk?
No, I just wanted to, just, we have, uh, the deadline for petitions was ended at five o'clock. My brain's kind of jello, so that's why I'm not with it. With the, the voting board, um, and, um, candidates can know that if, if you don't hear from me, your petition is okay, um, any curing that would have to be done, I'll try to let you know by tomorrow morning at the very latest. And I'm hope to get this finished because I'm supposed to go to the Colorado Public Plan Coalition Conference with the police chief and commander, um, Lorenz, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday morning, and I hope we can get the petitions all done so I can do that, that's with the police pension board, so. I'm glad this process is just about over. And a reminder that next Tuesday night is the lot drawing for candidates and the kind of candidate orientation night to talk about campaign finance and practices and tips and what to do and what not to do and, and therefore questions and advice too. So, um, and if any, if anybody has any questions about any of this process, just, um, feel free to call.
Thank you.
And my thoughts and prayers are with the people in Texas.
Before I ask the other councilmembers to speak, uh, let me, uh, also repeat that our cities' prayers and, or certainly I believe from our council, our, our cities', our prayers for the people that are really going through a terrible, difficult time in Texas, I'm sure at least one of you has some family or friends or something down there, I certainly do, um, feeling a lot of compassion in that direction, that must be horrible to be- That must be horrible to be not wondering, wondering when you're going to be flooded or sitting in a house on the second level, and having that kind of fear coming to your door. Now, move on to city council.
Madam Mayor, I, there was one thing I forgot, because there was a question about the, that liquor business that I brought up last time, and I think Councilmember Davis asked when they were going to go into effect. And I asked Robin, and he said, "They don't know when." It's just whenever they pass them, they go into effect. It can be odd times of the year, so it's not necessarily first of the year. And if you are interested in a letter that you could send as a city to, maybe we can start a trend of, besides just the clerks weighing in, that cities could actually weigh in, I think he sent you those, that chart of all the, the city of Fountain had huge amounts of special event permits that were city-sponsored events, and that wouldn't be allowed anymore, so, if that rule passed. So if you want to have a letter that the mayor and council sends, that's something we can work on. And she, she also, or she, Robin also suggested that it be sent to the Secretary of State and the Attorney General as well. So if you want to do that, I don't know if it needs to be...
I think that might be a study...
Something official, but, you know, we can talk about it.
Wouldn't that be a study session discussion if this comes to fruition, or explanation as well as council's decision as to whether they want to do a group...
We can, yeah, unless you want to give us directions tonight to go ahead and do something, but I'm sure you want to know a little bit more details about what the rules are.
Right.
And I did send you out what the rule, the amendments look like, and not to argue with city clerk, I don't believe this would impact city projects necessarily, but...
Which is something we need to know.
It would impact certain nonprofits, but it looks like there's still language in there that would allow the city to do, to get a special use permit in local works, and, but we're not 100% sure yet on that. So it's, but CML is working on our behalf to make sure that we still have some flexibility with our, with our special use permit.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to imply that it hurts, or could potentially hurt the city of Wheat Ridge, you know, like the administrations that...
Events in general, you meant, okay.
Just events in general. Well, and if the, if the city ever did want to have sponsor an event by itself where liquor was sold, that would be, couldn't do it. But it also affects things within our community. The fire department can't have a picnic and sell beer. The police department couldn't have a picnic and sell beer. Band boosters...
I don't know for 100%, I'm not 100% sure that's the case, and the language...
That's not a special district.
Yeah.
But if our city, the police department, is part of the city, then they couldn't do that.
The city's still allowed, in the language that was provided, my understanding.
Might be helpful if we just reach...
Do I remember correctly that something like a PTA could not have...
Yeah, it was educational is what's being struck, is the...
Band boosters, palms...
We could bring this to a future study session if you'd like to get in more detail.
Yeah, I think we should talk about this.
We can reach out to CML, and that way you don't have to be sure tonight. They're really very good about coming out with guidance, and I'm happy to reach out to them, and I'm sure they've probably got a white paper on this that's pretty good. If they don't, I'll ask them to do one, and we'll bring that to you.
Okay. Mr. Inn?
Thank you. Two questions. Patrick, when is the sustainability reporting date again?
That is September 11th. It's, that's a regular business meeting that evening, but a fairly short one, so we'll have a quick study session afterwards where they'll provide a presentation.
Okay. The second question is, since the resident Dorothy Archer had brought up the discussion on bulk plane and having that on a study session, do you have that on a future study session agenda?
It's on the future list. It's not scheduled on a specific night yet. The mayor pro tem and I did speak with this briefly. We had a discussion about wrapping this into discussions about, because this does have an impact on many other items that we're also discussing, accessory dwelling units, rental properties, code enforcement, extended state lodging, short-term rentals. I mean, so, we haven't picked a date, but if the mayor pro tem wants to respond, I don't, if he has any...
Yeah, I think this week we'll talk about it a little bit more and see if we can't get it on. It's, I don't know that it's, I'm a little bit reticent to do it in isolation, because there is, it is tied to two or three other things that we've been, that have been circling around. So let me, why don't we talk about it offline, and I'll check the, the time that we can get it. It'll definitely be this year. I think it'll just, we'll just add a couple of other items to it to make sure that we have a full discussion.
Don't know if it will be for the election, though.
Okay, I just want to make sure we don't forget about it, realizing it is important, and I really don't kind of see it rolling into Airbnbs or...
No, understood.
You know, anything else. I mean, to me, this is a separate discussion that the citizens have been requesting for several months. We discussed it last year. I just don't want to put it off and put it off, because no one really wants to deal with this before an election. So if we could get it on before in a study session, just to hear more from the citizens as to what's on their mind, what they would like to see, I'd appreciate it.
We'll look at it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Joe Demott said. I'm on the board of the Wheat Ridge Business District also. September 7th, we have an open house at IPI 5807 West 38th Avenue from 4 to 6. And if you know of any business or property owned, commercial property owners that were considering maybe updating their facade, now would be a really great time for them to come in and talk to us about that. I also wanted to just give a quick update. Superintendent Dr. Jason Glass sent out an email on August 25th saying that he will be making no recommendations for any school closures until the earliest of the 2019, 2020, '20 school year. So, so as of right now, all the talk about school closures are off the table. They're not, however, permanently off the table, but they will be looking at it, reviewing it, and making reservations, recommendations later. So now would be a time to definitely grab his ear and talk about your school.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to remind everybody of the September 6th meeting at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center with the Wheat Ridge Police Department to talk about crime and safety in the community, and that's at the rec center. I'd also like to address the, on August 31st is the overdose awareness day. It's an international day to acknowledge and to make folks aware of the issue of overdosing in our community, and as it specifically relates to the opioid addiction crisis, I think it's important for us all to take note of that and be aware that August 31st is the overdose awareness day. On September 4th, the day that we're not going to have our city council meeting for Labor Day, is actually my birthday. And so for my birthday, I've donated my birthday to the Lutheran Medical Center Foundation, and so at Colorado Plus all day long on Labor Day, they'll be serving a lamb meal, and proceeds from that will be going to the Lutheran Medical Center Foundation. So if you enjoy lamb and enjoy the cooking at Colorado Plus, then that would be a great place to go on Labor Day, because all the proceeds from that will be going to the Lutheran Medical Center Foundation. And then, as it relates to the drag racing event that occurred in the late evening of August 18th and into August 19th, I guess I'd ask the city manager, do we have any update on any sort of outcome from that event, or does the, is the police still looking into that, or what was the, the outcome from that situation?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have a up-to-date response for you, but I can get one, and I'll email you all. The last I know, they were, they were still attempting to find the folks that organized that and to speak with them, and I'm not sure if that has happened yet or not, but I will check with the chief tomorrow.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And then, since my extended family lives in southern Texas, I'd also offer my thoughts and prayers to everybody in Texas, and thank all of the first responders from Colorado that are leaving and going to Texas to help with the response effort. So thank you to both those in Colorado that are leaving to help, and also prayers for those in Texas that are enduring what is now considered to be a once-in-a-century event. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Thank you. I'll just briefly thank Councilmember Fitzgerald and the other folks from District 3 who came out and sat down with us and, and talked about questions that they had about the city in District 3, and had some, we had a great discussion at the rec center. We'll be doing that again, so I hope everyone will keep an eye out for that and come enjoy. Thank you to the mayor, who joined us as well.
What's your name again? Mr. Fitzgerald?
Fitzpatrick, is that, is that how you...
I like calling you that.
I know you do. You always have. It's been four years now.
I just sort of stuck on that.
You're stuck on it, right, I know.
Could you change your name for me?
Yeah, I'll look into changing my name, right. In regards to the Frutdale lots, I would just like to let people know that if they'd like to see floor plans, they are available at www.hartman... and hartmaneliinvestments.com/frutdale. Yeah, that's hartmaneli.com. Right.
And you can also go to the city's website and find that.
You have it on the website?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure it is.
Okay, all right, good. It's a little early to make reservations, but we have been getting inquiries about that, so...
Sorry. You're on.[1319.82][1319.82](laughing). I was really tempted. I was making up my mind. All right, you're Larry.
Yes, I thank, I would like to thank staff, and reiterate that there are, I have no personal feelings that something amiss is going on in our accounting and budgeting department, and I'm looking at this at a macro level and on a procedural level, not any personalities at all. So I don't want anyone to take that as an aspersion, my questions as aspersions. That being said, I would highly recommend that everybody bring no do's to the 2018 budget study sessions.[1364.23][1364.23](laughing).
I'm offended by that.
Yeah. Do we allow a second go around? Better be good.
It is. I was going to say, on the Hartman Eli website, there, you can sign up to be on the waiting list for housing there. They did add that several months ago, so I just wanted to make everyone aware that you can do that.
And, Madam Mayor, Treasurer Jared DeTulio had given me his August 21st bi-weekly report for the hailstorm, and I've passed that out to council. So as you can see, the total year-to-date for all permits submitted is at 5,035 permits submitted, and the total inspections completed year-to-date in 2017 is 7,084. That compares to 1,029 in 2016. And there's been a total cost associated with contract labor with Charles Abbott and Associates of $304,757.50, and we've received in revenue from the permits that have been processed regarding residential roof permits, a total of $2,088,98.76. That's the total for all of 2017. Since the storm, it's $2,065,641.12. But that's the report that he asked me to pass out, so thank you.
Thank you. First of all, let me say that I think council did a, did a very good job on revising the purchasing policy. I think that was a nice blend of thoughts and ideas. I'm glad, I hope that it does help our purchasing department a little bit smoother, as well as works well with our vendors. I think it will. Couple things. Margie Seifer, who has been our beloved kite festival chairman, has, is going to be giving up that position. She is, that's really a loss for us. She's done a dynamite job as far as getting us excited about it. Unfortunately, the kite festival got rained out the last two years after a tremendous amount of planning and growing it, et cetera. But it's going to be hard to replace Margie Seifer, as we all know, she's full of wonderful energy. And then on the, once again, on the Houston crisis, I'm hoping people are thinking about sending a donation to the Red Cross, is the way I've personally done it, is because that will help so many people who are perhaps in a situation where victims of that terrible crisis down there. So, we want a little break before we move on to the council budget discussion. You want your no do's, or... Well, actually, this is for this year, so it'll be much more interesting. It's an update.
This will be fairly short.
Short, okay.
Are we officially adjourned?
We, the, yes, we are officially adjourning the business meeting.
Give me a second.
It's really not a budget, it's kind of, it's a review of... Do you guys want a break?
No.
I'm timing you. Ron? Six. Six. Wish I could do a more large...
Wish I could do a little not.